To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, our nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April seventeenth County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Craig can help you with that and he's in the front row at the desk. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission minutes from April tenth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
A motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in amount of four hundred sixty-five thousand forty-six dollars and sixty-four cents.
Pay the bills.
Second.
A motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is auditor's account with the county treasurer for March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Item B is Human Services two thousand eighteen first quarter report for Minnehaw County and Lincoln Counties. Item C is Minnehaw County Sheriff's Report for March two thousand eighteen. Item D is the Minnehaw County Highway Construction Projects for April two thousand eighteen. And item E is Register of Deeds Revenue Report for March of two thousand eighteen. And those are all on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
A motion as second. Any questions on those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatement approval, recommendations for approval. Olivia.
Yes, we have one for the elderly assessment freeze, RDID two four four two nine, two thousand seventeen property taxes in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for two dump truck bodies and hydraulic systems for the highway department. Are there any questions for DJ? Otherwise, it's just an approval for notice.
Prove. Second.
A motion as second. If there's no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is compromise of lean. There are none. And next, we have opportunity for public comment. This is a time when you can speak on something that is not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes, please, and identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Catherine Riffle. I was here last week. I assume that I was misunderstood. Years ago, I started the whole, how do I say this? The whole movement within the county. I, myself and a couple others, we have brought about infrastructure changes which added the Bishop Dudley House, added homeless coalition, added face at Compass Center, on and on and on. Okay, I believe that you, Ms. Cindy, as a group of all of you here, and not singling you out so much, but you were the one that told me that everything was in the works that I asked for. What I was asking for was an emergency shelter. What you were referring to, I found out later from a cough in the city council, because I was thankful for everybody moving to get an emergency shelter open before that storm just passed through. And what you were referring to, I believe now, was the health, health, I'm a little bit nervous here and I don't mind saying so, I haven't slept well because of all this. You have a health and drug and alcohol program you started to help other people. That was also to my figurines years ago, when I brought it all to everyone's attention. You figured, I assumed, that I was referring to that. That is my work from years ago, that I assumed y'all had it back in working order already. Come to find out, it's not totally together. You thought I was here for that. I'm not here for that. That's my work, already done. I move on. Okay? I am here for the homeless, on the streets, the displaced, the distraught, the people that were out there. When you were home in this storm, nice and warm, food, beds, clothing, blankets, they weren't. They were out there shivering in the cold, not knowing where to go, being turned away at the Bishop Dudley House, being turned away at the Union Gospel Mission. Now you tell me what's left.
Mrs. Riffle, do you have any additional information?
Yes, I do. Because what I referred to last week, and I didn't get to finish, was that holding someone accountable as the authoritative figures in Pennsylvania is what also helped to get me out here. My initiative is to get you people somehow to open up an emergency center. We do not have one here. You cannot keep changing all the organizations above yourself and all the facilities to meet what you think is what everybody else needs or is expected to have. The people on the street is a different community than we are. They need things different than what you think they need. And you're not meeting their needs. How can you turn around and get another medical facility gone when you can't even get them off the streets yet? To be able to move ahead, you gotta start at the beginning. And I am not gonna stop. I'm gonna come to every meeting. I had been gone to city council, I found out for six to eight months I'm down there, and alls it is is listening to what's going on.
Mrs. Riffle, I would like to thank you for your public comment, but you have exceeded your time.
I was told I get five minutes to speak.
Yep, and you're about done.
I'm about done, but I'm not done.
One minute.
And therefore, I have been questioned about that I speak with the bishop or not. Here's his rosary that he gave me, when he shook my hand and bowed and kissed the back of my hand and thanked me for all my work on the streets and getting the Dudley and all going. Now, I'm asking you people, I don't know how you expect to do it. I don't wanna do your work for you again like I did ten years ago. And yous wouldn't even have all these good jobs keeping all this stuff going if it wasn't for me. Double check the records. I got proof of right here. I have proof of my words, my work. Now, I expect as one single citizen in this community that you do something to help the less fortunate. They should not have been out there in that storm. I had snow up to my knees and took a man with a tractor and a plow to get out my driveway so I could get down to help the people. Nobody was down there helping me. I didn't see any of you people down there. I didn't see anybody down there. And then, when I did find a man that could take some people into the motel, I'm finding out now the motels aren't even accepting some of the homeless. But yet, the cops are sitting behind the vehicle up there, behind the trees.
Riffle, you have now had your five minutes, so I would ask you to please sit down so we can move on to the next question.
I'm not gonna sit down. I'm gonna leave.
Mrs. Riffle, thank you.
But I expect yous to do something. I'm gonna come back every time. And I'm gonna do a thing to change your five minutes.
Mrs. Riffle, thank you. Thank you.
Fifteen minutes a month is ninety-nine.
Madam Chair, I think you should declare her to be in contempt of commission and ask her to be escorted out.
You don't have to escort me. I know how to get out.
Then go.
Okay, thank you. Goodbye.
But I'm not gonna keep ignoring the people that need your help. And don't smirk at me because you're not the one down there. They are.
Is there anyone else for public comment? I think the highway has a comment.
Wanna fix highways, but you don't wanna fix the place for the people to go to be safe and warm. Thank you for your service, but you don't have to escort me. Maybe I oughta talk to them about thinking what they're doing wrong.
Hello, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. I didn't have anything on the agenda, but I would like to give you just a real brief update on the snowstorm event that we had over the weekend. Summary of the weather event from April fourteenth and fifteenth, which was Saturday and Sunday. Sioux Falls received over thirteen inches of snow. We had basically sustained winds of thirty miles an hour or more. Wind gusts over fifty miles per hour for quite a bit of the weekend. On Saturday, we had twelve of our operators come into the shop. We went and checked roads. The visibility with the snow and the wind was basically between zero and five hundred feet for much of the area that they were able to go check. And so, our twelve operators, even though they came in, they were not able to take plows out on Saturday. So after two hours, we let them go back home. On Sunday, eighteen of our operators, or seventeen of our operators and a mechanic were able to make it in. And they did come in and work between six and a half and eight hours on Sunday. Were able to make passes and get going pretty good on the roads and clear most of the snow. The sun was out, so everything was cleared up pretty well. For cost, we had about sixteen thousand dollars into this event, which was actually a pretty low dollar amount. Because of the winds, we weren't able to put down salt like we would typically put down salt when we get this much snow. So, much of that was just labor and equipment cost of running trucks. And so, that's just a real brief update tonight. And into tomorrow morning, we're supposed to get another dose of Mother Nature, so January is not quite over yet. And I think we're expected to get four to six inches of snow, something like that, beginning three, four o'clock in the morning. So, we'll be back out again.
Thank you, DJ. Are there any questions for DJ on this one?
I have one question, and it's actually related to our bills today and the bid on the trucks. Didn't we just pay for a couple of truck beds in today's bills? And are we getting two more truck beds?
So the way that we-
Are they the same ones, or we're just buying two a week, or what?
The way that our truck purchasing works is we buy chassis and then we buy the bodies. That process takes between nine and twelve months to complete. And so, we're almost always in that process somewhere, whether we're in the beginning of the process like today where we're asking for permission to go and purchase the bodies, or at the end of the process like we are today of paying for the bodies from last year. So-
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on public comment? All right, and we'll move on to regular business. Item number ten is consider a recommendation for bid awards for the construction of the parking lot H. The bids were opened on April fourth. Mark, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Crinns, Facilities Director. On April fourth, we opened bids for the construction of parking lot H. The bids came in as follows. Sioux Cup Construction, one hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Asphalt Surfacing Company, two hundred and forty thousand, one hundred dollars. Double H Paving, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and forty cents. The bids have been reviewed and I'm requesting commission consideration of the bid award to Sioux Cup Construction for the construction of parking lot H.
Second, with a question.
Commissioner Kersky.
What was the budgeted estimate?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven is consider recommendation for a bid award for parking lot replacement at the juvenile detention center. The bids were also opened April fourth.
So, this one, the same as parking lot H. The bids came in as follows. Sioux Cup Construction, one hundred twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. Black type paving, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Double H paving, one hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty cents. And asphalt surfacing company, one hundred and forty-seven dollars, six hundred and seven, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. We've reviewed the bids and I'm requesting commission consideration of the bid award to Sioux Cup Construction on this project also.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, just one more. Again, what was the budgeted estimate?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand on this one.
Pretty close on this one. Are these two projects gonna be run concurrently?
Yep, yep, they're gonna both start real soon here, so.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll be glad for the extra parking.
Right.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Item number twelve is authorize the chairman to sign amendment number two to the Design Services Agreement between Minnehaw County and the Banner Associates Incorporated for the MC seventeen dash nineteen culvert replacements. DJ, we maybe don't even have any questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie, again, Highway Superintendent. This agreement is for Banner Associates, or this amendment, I'm sorry, is for Banner Associates. They are currently designing eleven culvert crossing replacements for us. This amendment is for a couple of things. When we entered into this agreement, we did not understand fully the scope of the Army Corps of Engineers four oh four permitting, and that was just because we didn't know what their jurisdiction claim would be. And so, we had to wait until we got into the process for them to make a determination of what their jurisdiction would be. Once we determined or found out that they would have jurisdiction of the eleven culverts, we knew that we would have to prepare documents for a four oh four permit application. And so, a big part of this amendment is to prepare the documents so we can submit those permits using in-house staff. And Banner will prepare the exhibits and the documents that accompanies the application. The remaining part of the amendment, I think I left my paperwork at the chair over there. Let me grab my paperwork. Oops. So, it's a sixteen thousand dollar amendment, and the second part of the amendment is for preparing easements. Twenty temporary construction easements, eight permanent easements, and one H plat. And that's going to be required for the construction portion of the project. Banner Associates has proposed that they prepare the documents. We'll take their documents and negotiate and meet with the landowners and acquire those easements from the landowners and file the ones that are required to be filed. And then, we'll go to construction phase. So, the sixteen thousand dollar amendment, the majority of that is the four oh four permitting stuff, and the rest of it is the easement documents. And that will bring the total agreement amount to fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars, and asking for your approval of amendment number two.
Questions? Motion? Commissioner Bender, again.
DJ, just a quick explanation, if you would, of what that four oh four agreement really is.
Okay, so, the Army Corps of Engineers, they manage and oversee all the waters of the state and the United States. And in any time that we go do construction work in or near or around any of those waters of the U.S., they require us to permit that work. And because we're replacing culverts that are in line with their navigable streams or their streams that are under their jurisdiction, they require us to get a permit. When we submit a permit application, they respond back with whatever requirements we have to fulfill during construction. Sometimes, it's, we have to do it during a certain construction season so we don't affect the reproduction of minnows and that kind of thing. Sometimes, it's that we're required to have a bypass channel constructed so we allow for the navigable flow of fish and that kind of thing. So, that permit application is something that they require so they can tell us how they would like us to do construction.
So, do they require this four oh four permit on everything?
No, they only have jurisdiction on certain waterways. Every time that they have jurisdiction, which is a stream that's connected to a navigable waterway, that, there's pages and pages and pages of definitions that follow that. But any time that we're connected to a navigable waterway, then we're in the waters of the U.S. And then, they would say that they have, and then they would say that they have jurisdiction and that we would be required to submit an application. There are simplified processes, so they have national permits. And when we're doing maintenance, a lot of times, we don't have to go through the full process. They can say that we qualify for a national permit and we can do maintenance. But when we're replacing a culvert, a lot of times, we're gonna have to go through the full process.
Thank you, I think.
Commissioner Bender.
Just to clarify on this one, just to show the scope of this, I mean, ten out of the eleven culverts are claiming jurisdiction over, correct?
Yes, yes.
Is that navigable by inner tube or barge?
Toy boat.
That's a great question, because there, several of these streams, you're not gonna have a boat go down them.
Toy boat.
They do have, what they define, a hydraulic nexus, which plays into the jurisdictional component of a stream as well. So, if they have a hydraulic nexus, if the water, if the water is able to reach a navigable waterway, then that allows them to have jurisdiction as well.
So, don't mess with the minnows?
Don't mess with the minnows. Don't mess with the frogs. Stay away from most bats and birds.
I need a motion on this one.
Move to approve. Second.
A motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen is authorize the chairman to sign agreement between Minnehaw County and Stockwell Engineers for construction administration. DJ.
Commissioners, this project is probably our signature project of two thousand eighteen. It's the reconstruction of Highway one thirty-seven. It's a six and a quarter, six and a half mile long stretch of one thirty-seven north of Crooks. And we recently awarded the construction project to RNG Construction Company. That's about two point eight million dollars. And then, this agreement will be with Stockwell Engineers to do the construction administration or oversee that contractor to make sure the contractor builds it to our standards. This amendment, or this agreement is two hundred and thirty-four thousand, twelve dollars. And it will be billed on a time and materials basis. And so, we'll pay for the number of hours that they are actually out there and working on the project and then any overhead costs that they have for surveying equipment and that kind of thing. So, it's not a lump sum contract. It's, we'll be paying for what we require them to do for us. And if you have any questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, request your approval of the agreement.
Questions?
Move approval.
I have one question. I'll take a sec. I have a motion and a second. So, when it runs into one ten, is that where we have to move the road out a little bit at that point? Isn't that right?
Yes, yes. At one ten, there is a slight realignment of the roadway where we have the church up there.
Okay, so, will it start before that and go through that intersection? I'm sorry. Or does it start right after one ten? So, will that be part of this construction project? Or does it start right after one ten?
The construction project starts, I think, about a thousand feet or so north of one ten. And so, it will go through that intersection. There's gonna be a little bit of a realignment. One ten will also be a little bit realigned, because if you know now, as you're going east to west on one ten, those roads, as they go through one thirty-seven, are offset a little bit, which is a dangerous situation. So, those will be lined up a little bit better, too.
Okay. I have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen is consider a motion to authorize the highway department to purchase various materials and supplies through procurement contracts.
Commissioners, every year, we purchase as many things as practical off of other agencies' contracts. That allows us to be a little bit more efficient in our purchasing, let somebody else do the bidding work. And so, there's a number of contracts that we use every year. By our purchasing policy, we're required to notify you of what those contracts are, and then it gets placed into the minutes. On the second page of the memo there, there's a table of nine different contracts that we purchase off of throughout the entire year. We purchase tires off of the WSCA contract. We purchase fuel off the State of South Dakota contract. Mastic, which is a material that we fill joints with, we purchase that off the South Dakota State contract. Building and shop supplies, that would be anything from nuts and bolts to safety gloves. We purchase that off the NASPA contract. Auto parts, air filters, oil filters, that kind of thing, off the NASPA contract. Automotive filters, there's a second contract directly through the State of South Dakota that we'll purchase some of them off of. Digital radios, those would be our radios that we talk with Lynn and the sheriff's office and Metro and that kind of thing, and each other. The State of South Dakota has a contract with Motorola on those. The LED light bars, there's a NASPA contract. Every time that we are purchasing new vehicles and assembling them or replacing an old vehicle's light bars, or if there's damage to one and we have to purchase new ones, we purchase those off the NASPA contract. And then, steel culverts or metal culverts, occasionally, we will need some of those. When we do driveway approaches, we use concrete culverts underneath the roadway. But if we're doing a driveway approach, then we'll use metal culverts a lot of times. Beadle County has an open contract on that through True North Steel. So, if you've got any questions, I can try to answer them. Otherwise, I would like to, I think we need a motion just accepting that we purchase off of those contracts.
Madam Chair, I just, Mr. Boothie, you're spending a lot of money with our consent on all these items, and I would just ask you maybe to comment on the fact that property tax is not the source of the revenue that we're spending here, because people watching at home may think, wow, we're blowing their property tax money on this stuff. Not that we're blowing it, honestly, but could you comment on the sources of revenue for the highway department?
I certainly can, Commissioner Barth. You're right, the county highway department is funded. The majority of the funding comes from our wheel tax directly here in the county and then our motor vehicle registration fees. And so, those two revenue sources make up most of our funding. We don't receive any money from our property tax in the county. And so, while we do have a lot of contracts here with nine different contracts that we purchase off of, the total dollar amount in our overall budget is relatively small. For example, our fuel is probably the highest one out of all of these contracts, and we might spend three hundred thousand dollars on fuel throughout the entire year. Tires, we probably spend fifty thousand dollars, something like that. So, they're significant purchases, but the major expenses that we have are construction and repair actually on the roads that the people, citizens can see.
Commissioner Bender.
So, these items are all budgeted items. Really, what we're doing today is just giving you permission to purchase budgeted items off of these other bids.
That's exactly right, yeah.
And these state bids are for one year? We have to do this all year?
These are due for twelve months, yeah. Yeah, we do this every single year, yeah.
If there's no more questions, I need a motion that would state to authorize the highway department to purchase various materials and supplies through procurement contracts and to reference the attachment on this agenda item, because it gives the names and addresses.
That's the text of my motion, Madam Chair.
I second that motion.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number fifteen, we are going to go into a series of presentations to the commission, and there are a lot of them. So, I would ask you to please keep your presentations to ten minutes or less. I am going to have staff member timing these, and if you get to ten minutes, I apologize, but we're gonna cut you off because there's so many of them today. That wasn't the intent, but that is the way it's gonna go. So, item number fifteen is a presentation by the Director of the Public Advocates Department. Julie Holford, good morning, Julie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Holford, Director of the Public Advocates Office. And I will try and keep my comments short, but just wanted to give a brief history of the Public Advocates Office, why it was established, and where we are at today. But approximately eighteen years ago, the Public Advocates Office was established and originally run by Cynthia Howard as a means of cutting down on court-appointed attorney costs, cases that were going outside of the public defender's office and being assigned to private attorneys. In that time, the office has grown significantly. Originally, Cindy had herself and one other attorney there, and then a paralegal. Today, we have seven attorneys, including myself, two full-time paralegals, full-time and then a part-time administrative assistant. So, it has grown quite a bit in the last eighteen years since it has been open. Basically, what our office is here to do for the county is to provide court-appointed indigent defense when people come into court and they are unable to afford an attorney or provide a retainer to get their own attorney. The cases that come to our office are conflicts from the public defender's office. And what that means is, as an example, the public defender's office had two co-defendants. They could not represent them both. It would be a conflict of interest, so the second person would come to our office. Or if they have someone representing someone who's a witness, an adverse witness against another client of theirs, that would also be a conflict of interest. So, those are the types of cases that come over to our office. And we have everything at our office from class-two misdemeanors up to first-degree murder cases. The way I have things structured within the office at this point in time, I have our senior attorney, he is responsible for doing all the appellate work and the habeas corpus He is responsible for doing all the appellate work and the habeas corpus work. And then he would also take a major case, such as a first-degree murder, if we were to get that. I'm obviously responsible for administration. I have a caseload of felonies and misdemeanors. And I have one attorney that specializes in doing abuse and neglect cases, another attorney that does pretty much just juvenile cases. And then the other three attorneys, if I'm getting my numbers right, we split up the misdemeanors and the felonies. So that's how the office is run. Just a couple of numbers. Last year, we closed two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven cases. And I don't have that broke down. You know, that could be anything from the class-two misdemeanor up to a major felony. Our office expenditures were nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, which averages out to spending about three hundred and seventy-five dollars per case. So those are our numbers from last year. And that is all I have, unless there's some questions.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Are there any questions for Julie? Thank you, Julie.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Item number sixteen is a brief presentation from the Children's Inn program. Amy Carter, good morning, Amy.
Well, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to be here today. Before I talk a little bit about our program and our services, I did want to introduce who I have here today. Bill Colson is our Chief Executive Officer with Children's Home Society. And next to him is Muriel Nelson, who is our Chief Operating Officer. Heather Weig is our Rural Advocate. And Koby Ringling is our Shelter Supervisor at Children's Inn. And then Dave Nelson, I will actually invite up here to share a few words. He is currently on our Board of Directors and actually has been on our Board of Directors with Children's Inn since the beginning, which is nineteen seventy-seven. And of course, people also know him as a former state's attorney. So I'll turn it over here to Dave for a second.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for agreeing to hear from Children's Inn this morning. You know, as I was coming in here, I ran into Mike Milstead. And we reminisced about the days before Children's Inn existed and what happened to these little kids who were abused and neglected or these women who were abused by their spouses or significant others. And we recall that before Children's Inn, you've heard the story, I'm sure. These kids would be stuck in the back of a police car and taken down to the police station, which at the time was at the basement of City Hall, later on over at the old Public Safety Building, the old jail. These kids were propped up in the waiting room alongside the drunk drivers that were being brought in and alongside the felons that were being interrogated and alongside the people who were coming in to complain about the police, while the cops were on the phone trying to figure out a place to put these kids. And that's prompted the genesis of the Children's Inn so that there would be a safe place where professionals who are trained would be able to provide emergency shelter. And that's what Children's Inn is. It's an emergency shelter in an emergency when there are no other alternatives, no other places to go. So that was the genesis of Children's Inn in nineteen seventy-seven. And if you fast forward to the late eighties, mid-eighties, the Minnehaha County Commission undertook to support this organization financially and has done so consistently and regularly and quasi-permanently ever since. And for that, we are grateful. And without that support, we would certainly be significantly handicapped. So we appreciate your support. Children's Inn and Children's Home Society merged in about?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. And I remember, I don't know if any of you knew Dave Loving, but I remember, I'll bet you I'll bet you knew Dave. And I remember talking to him about Children's Home Society, which has the benefit of Medicaid reimbursement for a lot of their programming and state aid to education for a lot of their students and daycare students and and other kids and these other sources of revenue. And Children's Inn, on the other hand, really depended almost exclusively on charitable contributions and gifts and and compensation from city and county government. We do get some money for A and N kids who are sheltered there from the state. And we do get some money through the marriage and divorce fees by statute. And speaking with Dave about that, you know, there was some conversation about that. And Dave said that, you know, these missions for these two organizations are so intertwined. And the people that are served are so, you know, the same people with the same needs are served by both Children's Home Society and Children's Inn. And you and I saw that in the practice of law, where kids who would wind up being abused and neglected, maybe picked up by DSS, not having had a bath for a week, maybe not having had a meal since they were at their school, sought and received shelter at Children's Inn and wound up eventually being residents at the Children's Home Society because of the trauma that they experienced at the time they were with their parents. So I I'm just here to ask you to remember, so you can't, to to imagine what it would be like in our community without the Children's Home Society. And imagine what we would say to women who on a Friday night are victims of a violent assault, have no money, have no family, have no friends, maybe don't speak the language, whether we, you know, without without Children's Inn, it'd be like the old days where we would say to those women, essentially, you're on your own. What it would be like for these kids if we didn't have emergency shelter, imagine what it would be like. And I just got to, I just got to emphasize that word, emergency. You know, these are services that are provided, not at our convenience. They're provided because there's no choice. So I was a county employee for twenty-four years. And I was always really proud of the fact that my county was so supportive of Children's Inn over the years. And I just want to express that gratitude. Thank you for that. And trust that we will be able to continue to partner in the future.
Thank you, Dave. I think Amy's got a few more things to say.
Yes, I know. Cut me off if you need to, but so as Dave talked about, we are in emergency shelter. So currently, we have forty beds. And twenty-eight of those beds are designated for women and their children who are fleeing abusive situations. And twelve are for the group home or the A and Ns, the children who are placed with us through Child Protective Services. While with us in shelter, we provide all the basic needs for those individuals. It's really a time for them to heal and work through their crisis. So we want to take all that other stress away, the food, the clothing, transportation, childcare. Whatever it is that they need, we are going to provide that while they're with us. I think I did something here. I don't know, I might have, there's something on the screen, but I, last year, we had, we did nine hundred and sixty-two intakes with individuals into our shelter. Of those nine hundred and sixty-two intakes, four hundred and five were women. And the remaining five hundred and fifty-seven were children who were children who came to us either with mom or through our group home. The most telling number for our statistics is the shelter days. We did fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty shelter days, which is how many actual days people are staying with us in shelter. So for example, if we have a mom and her four kids with us today, that's five shelter days. Tomorrow, they stay again, now we're at ten shelter days. And that, it just accumulates over the course of the year. While our capacity is forty beds, we average forty-three point six people per day. We had as many as seventy-nine people in with in shelter with us on a given day. And that really, I share that that number because I think it's important to know that we are very committed to finding room for individuals who need that safe, immediate shelter. We can get creative on space if we need to, but knowing that we also operated over capacity sixty-four percent of the time last year. This, I'll let you look at this on your own. It's just tells the departures, where clients go after they leave shelter. Thirty-one percent are going to family or friends or others, and sixty percent go to another safe option. In addition to our shelter, we have all of our crisis intervention services. Again, for sake of time, I won't go through those individually. But just the first two I'll mention, between twenty-five, over twenty-five hundred crisis hotline calls and twenty-five hundred people coming into our shelter seeking in-person crisis counseling. You add that to what we're doing within our shelter clients alone, these are on top of all of that. So it's a, over twenty-seven hundred individuals received over fifteen thousand crisis intervention services. I'd also highlight the outreach. That's where we're going into medical facilities to meet with victims who are a victim of domestic violence and can't come to us or our court advocacy, where we're attending court hearings with victims. Our additional services, I will just highlight two of these. Our rural advocacy services, so Heather, who's here with us today, is our rural advocate. She travels into those rural counties of rural Minnehaha, Lincoln, Turner, Union, and McCook to meet with victims who, we take our services to to them. So filling out protection orders, going to court with them, meeting with law enforcement and being an advocate for them, whatever it might be. That's what our rural advocacy services provide. And then our grants to encourage arrest is a federal grant that we have where we are partner and collaborate with the Minnehaha County Sheriff and the Sioux Falls Police Department to be an advocate immediately after a victim has, after someone has been a victim of a domestic violence. So law enforcement through the county or Sioux Falls Police Department contact us. And Heather happens to be our advocate for that program as well, and we work with them. So I'm assuming that's my time. You can, I think you have the slides. I'm not sure if those were shared with you. But if there's any questions, you can certainly reach out to me at some point. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Sorry, we're cutting you off.
That's all right.
If anyone wants to see, there's a couple of slides left. They are in the folder up front that you could catch those, too. So with that, we'll move on to our next one, which is a presentation by Southeastern Council of Governments. Lynn Keller, good morning, Lynn.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I had the opportunity to serve on the FAN Committee. And if I didn't understand county government before, I sure do now. And it's all about property taxes and trying to do expansion. So I'm really going to focus today on what do you give SECOG and what do we do with those dollars? And how do we help the county? And I think you get a pretty good return on investment. So we are one of six planning districts in the State of South Dakota. We operate in the six southeastern counties. We operate under a joint cooperative agreement of our six counties and our forty municipalities. All of those are members of SECOG, and they pay dues to us. Minnehaha County pays about twenty-five thousand dollars a year in dues. Last year, and this is just SECOG alone, I also run Southeastern Development Foundation, Dakota Business Finance. This is just SECOG. For last year, we had about one point six million dollars in revenue. And of that, about seventeen percent came from dues. So you're seeing we're doing lots of things outside of that. The dues breakdown, the majority of those are paid by first-class municipalities at forty-four percent, counties at thirty-three, and then the second and third-class municipalities at twenty-three percent of the two hundred and eighty-three thousand total in dues. What do we use those dues for? Well, we have planners on staff that help all of our municipalities and counties provide our SEEK funding for water and wastewater infrastructure projects, storm sewer, streets, all of those kinds of things. Last year, we did about, we secured over thirty million dollars in grants and loans for those types of projects, which, if you divide that out by the dues we got, it's about a hundred and five dollars for every one dollar that was invested in dues. Not a bad return on investment. And then I just wanted to kind of focus. Everybody really just cares, what does that mean to you for Minnehaha County of that thirty million? Seventeen point, almost five million of it was in your county. And you paid a hundred and fifty-eight thousand of those dues, or you and your municipalities did. So again, that's an ROI of a hundred and ten per dollar paid in.
Lynn, can you give us a couple of examples of how that, what like, what kind of projects are we talking about? Where did that funding go?
Boy, you're putting me on the spot off the top of my head. I can, can I email you a full list of a breakdown of that? But it would be, it would be anything from a rec trail project. Maybe there was money in crooks to build a recreational trail. It could be a water sewer line, it could be a water tower, it could be any of those kinds of things. But I can give you a detailed list of that, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
And we also do land use planning. We want to make sure that if they're doing development, that it's planned well. And so we do comprehensive plans, zoning, municipal ordinances, and subdivision ordinances as well. We also are the coordinating entity for the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Many of you have had the opportunity to serve on the UDC. So that actual official capacity is with SECOG, and we end up staffing that. Last year of how it works is federal highway contracts with the Department of Transportation, who contracts with us, and we subcontract with you. And last year, out of that process, you ended up with seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and two dollars. And primarily, what that would be was any transportation planning you're doing in the metropolitan area. For every dollar that you spend, you get reimbursed point eight one nine five cents on the dollar. We also run for the Southeastern Development Foundation. It's a regional revolving loan fund, primarily provides gap financing for businesses in our six counties. Last year, we did, we awarded twenty economic development loans, or about two point eight million. Of that amount, one point four million was in Minnehaha County for ten projects. Just, I want to give you a brief example. One of the major things that we are involved with is daycares. Everybody knows there's a reason that daycares are primarily run by nonprofits. They're tough to make work. And so we were involved in the Playhouse. We did both an SEDF and DBF loan in Baltic. And that facility, I believe, is already full and has a waiting list. We also got involved with affordable housing, started out with Jim Schmidt and those Menlo Town Homes. And then we got involved with Governor's Houses, which, as you know, are built by prisoners in Springfield. In twenty-fourteen, you gave us four lots that you had taken back because of the non-payment of taxes. And we developed five Governor's Houses in twenty-fifteen. We sold those, and we ended up buying more land up in the northeast part of town. In twenty-seventeen, we developed eleven more houses up there. The price is one sixty-four nine. And what you get for that actually is your mortgage, or the buyer's mortgage would be a hundred and fifty-four nine. And then there's a ten thousand dollar forgivable grant over that, over a five-year period of time. But you'd get a twelve hundred square foot home, three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, includes all your appliances with a washer and dryer, a full unfinished basement, two-car attached garage. It's two-by-six construction. These are not manufactured homes. They don't come in pieces. They're very well-built and well-constructed, so much so that they have to have an air exchanger in them. And we actually tried to do some cost for this year to see if we could do stick-built, and we couldn't touch it. We're probably another thirty-five to fifty thousand more if we wanted to do stick-built. So there's a huge savings in having these built at the prison and bringing them here. Here's what they look like. And here's some interior shots, and I'll go through these relatively quickly. Changes this year will be that the cabinets aren't going to be oak anymore. They are going to be a darker color. They're going to be granite in the kitchen, so they're doing some upgrading. And forever, I love the people at Springfield, but it's all run by men in the fashion or the decorative sense. It's not always what I would think. So we got rid of gold a few years ago, and now we're moving on away from oak. What does this mean to you? Well, you guys have always been generous enough that when we have bought lot, when we have either acquired lots from you or when we've purchased lots, you have allowed us to take those off the tax rolls while we are developing them. And then you put them back on. But I wanted to give you a sense of what does that mean when you give up that five hundred dollars in taxes or whatever that lot would bring you anyway. So these are our total sales. And over the last three years, we've done twenty-four total sales of three point six million dollars. If you translate that into taxes, what does that mean? It's about an impact annually of seventy-two thousand dollars. Because this is so much fun, we decided that last year in November, we purchased another thirty-three lots up in that same area, plus another seven point seven acres, which has the ability for another twenty-four lots to be developed there. And so we planned to continue to do about ten of these a year. And again, we have put in an application for you to pull these off the tax rolls while we try and develop them. We also run Dakota Business Finance, which is an SBA five oh four program, which primarily helps to finance buildings, leasehold improvements, long-term equipment, those types of things. A little bit different here in that SBA gives you a statewide presence in that. So we run that through the whole State of South Dakota. And you can see, we've also picked up a few counties in Minnesota, Iowa, and Nebraska, not because we want to be doing a lot of business there, but because our lenders are doing business there and they want us to go with them. Typical structure is the bank would provide fifty percent of the financing, and SBA would issue the bonds for the forty percent. And the borrower comes up with ten percent, which is huge for them. Last year, we had a record-breaking year. We did thirty-seven loans of twenty-four million dollars. And overall, whoops, what I want to give you a sense of is overall, in the whole State of South Dakota, if you added everybody else together, we did more than they did last year. And so we're doing a lot of volume. Just to give you a sense of a few that were done in Minnehaha County and also the city of Sioux Falls, we did the mini sun storage in Brandon. And Keller Williams is a five oh four. Nyberg's Ace Hardware Downtown is a five oh four. Tires, Tires, Tires. So we've got two different loans on that, one for the equipment and one for the building over on by Lake Lorraine. And that's all I've got, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions for Lynn? I want to thank you for the work that you've done with basically affordable housing because it is quite amazing. And you hear that in the city news all the time, that the need for affordable housing to bring in workforce and and a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And usually at the fair, they have those houses on display if somebody wants to walk through them and see them. And you end up with the basement. And you guys have really done a great job. And I'm glad that the county can partner with you in a way that works for us, too, to put those people back or those houses on the tax rolls. So it has been profitable for us in our tax base. So thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by Interlake's Community Action Partnership. Cindy Danabring.
Good morning. I am Cindy Danabring, Executive Director of Interlake's Community Action. And with me today is Bonnie Duffy. Bonnie is on our Board of Directors. And Tammy Demening is the Director of Minnehaha Services and Heartland House. And Jeff Barth is currently on our Board of Directors as well. I will give a brief overview on ICAP. And then Tammy will talk a little more specifically about the Heartland House program. I believe that you all received a copy of our annual report. So that really tells all the programs that we administer throughout the fourteen counties. Doesn't mean that every program that you see in that document happened in every county and not everyone happened in Minnehaha County. The programs we offer in the various counties is based on the need in that county. And as you might suspect, the needs in Minnehaha County vary from those in Grant County because of the rural nature of some of our counties opposed to the population base here. of the rural nature of some of our counties opposed to the population base here. Some of the programs we do offer here in the, in Manyaha County, we are working with affordable housing as general partner in a sixty-two-unit tax credit property. And that property is currently under extensive renovation, and is owner and operator of a standalone fifteen-unit affordable housing complex. Both of these properties are here in Sioux Falls. We operate VIDA, Volunteer Income Tax Assistance here, weatherization assistance, home rehab and repair. We have Head Start in rural Manyaha County, and Early Head Start here in Sioux Falls, in addition to rural Manyaha. We manage the public transit programs in Del Rapids, Hartford, and Brandon. And not, and last but not least, we operate the Heartland House, Bright Futures, and Emergency Solutions Grants. The Bright Futures program is a look-alike program to Heartland House, and it's funded almost exclusively by Sioux Falls Community Development with the federal funds that they receive. Sioux Falls Community Development has funded this program for the last six years. They felt it was time to do a third-party evaluation on this program. They hired Augustana University to do this evaluation, which just kind of off the, making me kind of nervous, because it's always putting it out there to a third party. Is this program beneficial? Does it do what it's, it's meant to do, and what we anecdotal, anecdotally can talk about that it does, when it comes down to factual, when, when they compare to a control group that did not receive case management, when they looked at, at people that are currently in the program, and people who have left the program over the course of those six years. How did that, this program, which again is a look-alike to Heartland House, how did that really, for the long-term, benefit the people that we serve? Or is it a, you help them today, and it goes away? We have had the initial results of that evaluation in draft form, and the results are very encouraging. When the final report is issued, I will get that to you. Though it is about Bright Futures, I, I can't say enough about how it works at our agency. As Bright Futures and Heartland House look, look the same. So, when someone comes up on the waiting list, which by the way, has a hundred-and-forty-four people on it, they're, they go into whichever program we have funding in, because they're look-alike programs. So, I think the results of this evaluation will also be a, very much a correlation of if it was a Heartland House family, it would be similar results. So, that's all I'm going to say right now, unless you have questions for me. I will turn it over to Tammy to tell you a little more specifically about Heartland House.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. Tammy Denning. I'm the Director of Heartland House. As many of you know, Heartland House was started in nineteen ninety-six with fifteen families moving in to a, basically, two buildings that we run over on North, right, or East, or West Roy Street, sorry about that. And over the years, it has expanded. We moved to thirty-five-twenty North Fourth Avenue, which was formerly called Cumberland Apartments. And so, we expanded to twenty more units. And then, in two thousand and twelve, we expanded to eleven more units, where we did community-based rental assistance for these Heartland House families. Within the last year and a half, we have been given, you know, some direction by HUD, who is our, our major funding source. And they wanted us to move more towards rapid rehousing rather than transitional housing, for the simple fact that transitional housing is not permanent housing, whereas rapid rehousing is permanent housing. And so, it was either the choice of continuing with our transitional housing or going to rapid rehousing. But if we did do that, we would have probably lost our funding. So, the obvious solution to that was, was moving towards rapid rehousing. I think it's been a smooth, a smooth transition from that. It's, there's really not a lot, a lot of things that are different. As far as rapid rehousing goes, we only are allowed to accept people that are literally homeless, which, which entails coming from a shelter, emergency shelter here in town, such as Bishop Dudley, Union Gospel Mission, Children's Inn. Those are the three main emergency shelters that we see people from fleeing domestic abuse, still coming from a place where it's not habitable for human life. So, people living in a car, somebody living in a camper, a campground, things like that. We do accept children, children with families, and then also women that are pregnant. Throughout the course, they are accepted into the program. They work with a housing stabilization coach. We used to call them family case managers. Now, we're more into the coaching method, more than the instruction method and teaching method. None of us really like to be told what to do. So, we are very client-focused and client-based, where our clients are more involved with their plans, their, their housing stabilization plans. What is the best thing for them to do? They know best what works for their family, what works for their kids, things like that. And so, we are providing that, that case management and that coaching for up to, it's a two-year program, but normally, it's, it's about twelve months. We follow them through the lease of the program. We provide rental assistance for them. It's thirty percent of their income that we subsidize. ICAP subsidizes the, the other seventy percent, while the client pays thirty percent of their income. They actually move into an apartment that is, any apartment in Sioux Falls that will work with our, our program. We have a very good relationship with many, many landlords here in town that support our mission and our, our partners. While we do the case management, they work on a housing stabilization plan that basically entails, how are they going to maintain their housing beyond even when we're working with them? So, the very big thing for them is, is increasing their income, mostly from getting, getting a job or, or through employment. And so, we're, we're, you know, really working with those families very intensely to help them be, you know, great renters, and also productive members of the, the community. So, that's, that's kind of the gist of the program. Like you said, I don't want to, I don't want to go over unless anybody else has any questions for me.
Any questions for Tammy? Commissioner Bender?
What's the average length of stay for the Heartland House and the other programs that you offer?
Right now, the average length of stay since we've moved over to rapid rehousing from transitional housing is going to be about twelve months.
Okay.
You know, it is considered a two-year program, but we've also found in the past that when people know that they have two years, there's kind of some lag time where they're really not doing anything, you know, until it's, it's like the time that they have to leave. So, we're really, you know, at the get-go, we're, we're starting that exit planning with them right away. So, that way, they are preparing themselves every month for the time that they do have to leave after those twelve months, or after the rental assistance is done. And one of the good things, too, about rapid rehousing is they can actually stay at that apartment even after, after the rental assistance ends, whereas formerly in transitional housing, they had to leave the program. They had to leave the apartment building also. So, that's one of the good things.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Bender?
I'm curious what your, if you have a waiting list now at Heartland House under the rapid rehousing, or if there's units available?
We do. We, as Cindy had mentioned, we work with a synergy program through, it's the Manyaha County Human Services, Community Outreach, Bishop Dudley House, Independent Living Services. And we work with those families that are all referred. We use one big waiting list instead of having our own separate waiting list. So, we take families off of that waiting list. As Cindy said, there's a hundred-and-forty-four families on that waiting list right now that are all eligible for Heartland House, Bright Futures, or ESG. And so, we take those families when we do have vacancies. And after there is some turnover, if, if there is, we will take families right away to get them enrolled in the program. So, there's, there's really not a lot of waiting time for those families that are, that are on the waiting list. Thanks.
Commissioner Bender?
I, I just would comment, and I'm a big fan of the Heartland House, and I'm a fan of Tammy and Cindy and, and Bonnie, who's on the County Planning Commission with me, one of our top citizens in Manyaha County. Anyway, I'm a big fan of the work they do, because although they do get minimal assistance from our county, they are doing work that we would have to have our own department do. They're doing work that without them, we would have to raise taxes to care for folk that they do on their own. And not only that, but they have a little more latitude to act with tough love, to help people that need it, get square with the world. And gosh, I really like you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Bender.
Thank you. And your annual report is really nice. We get it, it comes to our home, all of us Commissioners. And I just finished going through mine. So, when it came up on my iPad, I was like, I already read this. So, yeah, thank you. If there's nothing else?
Okay.
Thank you, Tammy.
Well, thank you so much for your, for your support.
Yep. We'll go on to item number nineteen, which is a presentation by Carroll Institute Programming and Services. Gary?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gary Tushin. I'm the Executive Director of Carroll Institute here in Sioux Falls. On behalf of the board and the staff, I want to thank you for your time this morning. Carroll Institute is licensed and accredited by the South Dakota Department of Social Services to provide an array of behavioral health support for folks that are dealing with addictions and/or co-occurring mental health concerns. Our most recent fiscal year was June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen. We served one thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight individuals that are unduplicated. And that means that some of those folks can be enrolled in a number of services. On average, we serve, or should, on average, there's about three-hundred-and-twenty-plus individuals that are enrolled in our programming. We provide prevention services in, in schools outside of Sioux Falls, Brandon being the largest, and I think Garrettson being the smallest. We have a number of treatment programs, not only on our two sites, one located three-ten South First as well, and the other one, twelfth and Spring, but also in the Manyaha County Jail. We provide therapy support for folks that are incarcerated, and then providing we get assistance from, from parole and probation and judicial system. We then enroll them in continued care services after they're out of incarceration. The, the, the program that you folks help support is one-listed in terms of low-intensity residential. This has been going on now since twenty-fourteen, I think September of twenty-fourteen, it was kicked off. This program is designed for individuals that have been required to get into treatment involuntarily. Originally, it's back in twenty-fourteen, we started with eight beds that you were supporting. That was reduced in twenty-sixteen to four beds. And if you look at the statistics over those, those four years, back in fourteen, we had an average daily census of six-point-seven, fifteen, six-point-nine. Twenty-sixteen, when we reduced it to four beds, our average daily census was two-point-four. Last year in seventeen was two. This most recent year, twenty-eighteen, January through March, we're only averaging a census of one. And so, there's been a precipitous decline in the folks that are involved in this programming awaiting treatment services. To give you a sense for the individuals that are, that are reaching out to our support, sixty-one percent of them have a primary diagnosis of alcohol, twenty-two percent meth, fifteen percent marijuana, and then two percent other. We fortunately do not see a lot of heroin, fentanyl, which is a good thing, because those are very serious things. In terms of the question that I'd gotten the last time I was here, well, what are your outcomes? What can you expect to see with your investment? Recidivism rates is anywhere from forty percent all the way up to sixty percent. I mean, it, it varies depending upon which journal you, you read. Forty percent or so are those folks that are dealing with alcohol and/or marijuana, which means approximately sixty percent of those folks, after they've gone through treatment, are, are sober a year out. Okay? The sixty percent on the high mark is that's folks that are dealing with stimulants, meth. Meth is a, a pretty significant issue. And also, we don't see a lot of opiates right now in terms of pain medications. They're on that high end as well. So, there, there needs to be, you know, a, a stronger focus from the community at large as it relates to the medical community, because right now, you all know in terms across the country, opioids is ravishing certain communities out east. It's not such a big issue here right now. But science is finally catching up to some of these folks, some of these individuals that are dealing with it on a high recidivism rate in terms of using medication-assisted therapy, MAT. We're not there yet. The state is actually exploring that. The president just recently allocated money to all states to address the issue, and part of that is that they're going to be looking at medication-assisted treatment. Just to also expand on the numbers in terms of what you're supporting, in the most recent year, we had fifty-three admissions. And seventeen to twenty-five percent of those folks don't get into treatment. They've either dropped out, or the IBC's been dropped out, that sort of thing. So, you're, you're looking at about forty individuals that you helped assist get into treatment. And if it's alcohol, then do the math. Sixty percent of those folks then are, are in recovery a year out. So, while that's still not, still not something that you want to brag about, it is, it is progress. But we, we want you to understand that, that this program has a benefit despite the fact that its numbers are, are declining. And the thing that probably sticks out, I think, from our vantage point is, I think the sober, sobering center in the jail has, has reduced some of our numbers. I'd also tell you that folks that are trying to access treatment involuntarily, or whether they're family members, or a medical community, or anyone, law enforcement, once they're in the setting within the jail, there's, there's a concern for them to follow through with their, with their activity to get into treatment. And I would argue that once the detox program finds a home outside the jail, I think you're going to see numbers increasing in terms of those folks that are actually required to get into treatment. Okay? Of those three-hundred-and-plus people that are enrolled in our services at any one week throughout the year, upwards of eighty percent of them's income is, is twenty thousand or less. We operate on a sliding fee scale. We have a four-million-dollar budget. Sixty-nine percent of that is, is through the state, county. We don't get any city money. So, my political comment would be, we're, we're doing what we can in terms of the resources that we have available now on the treatment side of this thing, but we lack on the front end in terms of the prevention services. We, we provide, like I said, prevention services in five districts, which means we have a counselor there either a day or two days, working with the student body and the, and the, and the staff, and getting into not only the kids that are at risk and had been identified at risk, but delivering a message for kids as early as grade three in terms of how they can develop skills to resist pressure from, from other kids that may want them to, you know, smoke, drink alcohol, do marijuana, that sort of thing. Unfortunately, the state supports that on a grant basis through the feds, and it's always an ongoing thing of sustainability. Now, what we do is to try to sustain that despite grant issues, is, you know, and require the school districts to participate in the program. So, our funding is not only the state, but it's also the school districts. We're not in the Sioux Falls School District, unfortunately. Our primary service area is Manyaha and Lincoln County. So, average costs for inpatient treatment, roughly sixty-five-hundred all the way up to twenty thousand. If you're looking at a thirty, sixty, or sixty and ninety-day residential treatment program, can be anywhere from twelve thousand to sixty thousand. That average cost that I quoted in terms of inpatient is HSC cost. Their costs are about two-hundred-and-twenty-seven bucks a day. You folks are, are paying for the, the opportunity to reach that intense level of programming at seventy-six bucks a day, just to kind of give you an idea. Okay? We're, we're six months into our journey to become nationally accredited through CARF, C-A-R-F. For those of you that may not know what that is, it's Commission on Accreditation and Rehab Facilities. We have the state come in every three years, but we're, we're shifting gears a little bit in terms of trying to attract the commercial insurance market. And the only way we'll be able to do that is if we're nationally accredited. Okay?
Questions?
Gary?
No, it's you, Commissioner.
Oh, sorry. Gary, with the information you provided, is there any statistical information that would... is there any statistical information that would support the school systems in getting started in education at third grade or fourth grade? And what that does to frankly, the long-term problem that we all hear about daily?
Yes. One of the grant requirements that we have is to, to collect data and, and outcomes. So we survey the students every year, and we've got a year-by-year comparison. And I don't know exactly what, what those numbers would, would support. But yes, there, there is demonstrated evidence by the surveys. Not only do we do surveys, there's, there's national surveys. So we compare each of the school districts, compare them against the other school districts in South Dakota, and then we also compare against the national. And there is evidence that suggests that the earlier that you can get into the classroom, the, the opportunity for folks that are now then engaged in, you know, illicit drug use or smoking and alcohol goes down.
If there's an opportunity sometime to get us that information, that'd be awesome.
Additional questions for Gary? Commissioner Karski?
I'm going to, just to comment, I guess. And last week, going to kind of combine this with my liaison report, we had our meeting of our detox advisory board. And when you look at the relationship between Carroll Institute and our detox center and just the, the inner workings of how things come together, it's, it is quite fascinating. And the work done by each one, just piggybacking on, on the other one. You know, we got, we talk about how our involuntary commitments, our number of days being down, but it all comes down to maybe somebody in peer making a decision for somebody that's sitting in our detox center about where they should be going and that conflicting with some of the advice that maybe is happening locally. So it's, you know, I think we're, we have a very good partnership here, is I guess where I'm going with all this. And it's worthy of continuing that partnership, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Karski. Yeah. Just to follow up with that. Everything that we do in terms of placement of individuals is based on American Society of Addiction Medicine. Our counselors are licensed and trained to use that criteria to place these folks. And to your point about potential barriers in accessing certain levels of care, we're driven by that. However, there are times when we have to get authorization from the payer source. In this case, oftentimes, it's the Department of Social Services. And they're challenging us, well, can there be a lesser level of care? And I think that does create sometimes a hurdle and even sometimes a barrier. And I'm not here to throw, you know, throw anybody under the bus. It becomes a budget issue. And so we need to respond to that accordingly in terms of those folks that we assess to go into an inpatient environment. What's the best next level of service? And we have to make sure that we can get them in there and access that service. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. I think Commissioner Barth has a question?
I guess maybe two. One is, what's the prognosis for someone with a meth issue? Because I've heard, you know, it's two years or never to get where your mind is, is not craving it all the time. Is that, is that accurate?
No, recent literature would support that. There's individuals that are high users, you know, over a period of time and frequent users throughout the day. There's, there's phases that they go through, because it's a disease of the brain. It, it compromises your, your, your thinking. It's a, and so the treatment is cognitively based. But obviously, there's a first part, which is the detox. And that can be seven days, can be ten days, and can be fourteen days, depending upon, again, the individual's history. Okay? That's just to get somewhat stabilized medically. And then from there, you have about nine months of, of experiences with that individual that has continued in increased craving for it. He may have, he or she may have been without it for a couple of weeks, but there's still that intensity level there. And so that's where you ramp up the treatment side of it, okay? Then you get out to about a year, and I said nine months, and then you start, then you can start assessing their level of intensity need and hopefully titrate it. The, the trick to having long-term sustainability is right. It's not a year and you're on your road and you're, you know, you know, you can count on sometime in recovery. It needs to be, there needs to be continued programming into that thirteen-month, all the way up to eighteenth and sometimes a two years. Stay engaged. It may be one to two hours a week. It may be a combination of individual sessions and maybe a combination of family sessions. And the other thing in terms of when the rubber hits the road, when their feet are on the street, it has to be where they're contacted by the support system. Whether that's with their own support system or an agency support system, meaning calling them up frequently. And now, now with the technology, we can do that a little bit better. Because a lot of these folks, despite not having a lot of money for treatment, they got money for cigarettes and they got money for a phone and/or their habit. So the continued engagement of these folks is, should be minimally upwards, what, what they're seeing is upwards of two years.
Madam Chair?
One more question.
Well, I, it was really tough when I gave up smoking cigarettes, and I haven't given up drinking yet, but on IVCs.
Had met him.
Give us a call. We got away last night.
This is sort of a political question, I guess. We have an issue sometimes where, you know, family members send their family person for involuntary commitment, and they get a bill for it. Whereas if, you know, if Cindy sent me, she would not get a bill. But if my wife sent me, she would get a bill. And so we have situations where grandmothers are trying to pay off liens on their homes. Do you think that's fair? And do you think it's wise to impede family members from seeking the, the treatment that their family member needs?
No, notwithstanding the abuse that you can have with people just gaming the system and getting into treatment. They say they don't have any money. They demonstrate that. It's, it can be an inhibitor for folks to ride the storm out, if you will, to make sure that happens. If there's going to be a financial commitment from them. So there, so I would, I would, I would say to you, yes. I, I don't, I think that's part of the, the system failure, if you will, in terms of accessing and continued engagement. If it's going to cost me six grand, I mean, I love my brother, but, you know, I gotta, I, I hope that I can get that six thousand back at some point and, and there's a chance I might not be able to. So I, I would, I would agree with you, Commissioner Barth, that I think that for some is an insurmountable barrier. They're just going to not, they may try it one time. And typically, like I said, the recidivism rates, you gotta, you gotta, it's a highly, it's a chronic relapse disease. And I think we all kind of get hung up sometimes of people that we may know or hear about, well, he went to treatment. Well, he went the second time. Maybe it was the third time. But the thing that I always stress to people that ask me that question, okay? I've got four sisters, one of which died with, from cancer. She had it reoccur. Am I going to give up on her that second time? No. And do we want to give up on somebody that's going to try to seek treatment because it's a disease a second or third time? No. There are, I, we have to make tough choices at some point. An individual that's chronically ingrained in that lifestyle. He or she may not make a choice, no matter how many times you lead them to the, the treatment, you know, program. But I think what you're, what you're saying in terms of the, that being a financial barrier, it, it comes in, it comes into play.
Thank you, Gary. I don't think there's any more questions.
Thank you.
Item number twenty is consider a motion to adopt the recommendation changes to the Minnehaha County petition signature gathering policy. Craig Dewey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Earlier this year, Pennington County considered revisions and adopted revisions to their petition gathering policy. There were also bills passed at the legislature that changed some requirements regarding petition forms, requirements to circulate a petition as well as residency requirements. Those do not impact the county directly. But Carol Mueller instructed me in reviewing both to come up with some potential changes should you want to add anything to the petition policy. So the language that is in here in the memo, close to the bottom of the page, has one phrase that is different than the second page, which highlights what the actual wording of the policy is. So just to read out loud what the changes are as far as the petition gathering policy, there are two sentences. First sentence is petition gatherers are responsible for ensuring signature gathering efforts abide by all applicable laws regarding petition signature collection enacted by the state of South Dakota. And then the last sentence is failure to follow the described petition gatherer's policy will result in the petitioner being asked to leave county property. Failure to abide by all laws or leave county property upon request may result in removal or arrest by law enforcement officials. So that being said, this is put out for your discussion, should you choose to adopt it or not. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Madam Chair? So in this case, would it be our task to enforce state law as far as the exact details of correct signatures, addresses, and stuff like that?
That is not the intent of writing these sentences. That's a great question. That, that is not the intent. However, if there is someone complaining, I guess you'd have to refer them to the appropriate authorities.
If I may.
Commissioner Barth.
It seems to me that Bob Litz or the Secretary of State, whoever that person might be, would be the person I would know if they were being done exactly right. That said, I certainly, you know, we previously had a petition task force that met here many times and talked about, you know, the inclement weather type issue and all that. And I don't really see any objection to this, but I, I just don't want to be the one that is enforcing, you know, Karski spelled his name wrong or something, again. And I, I do remember also that one of the petition carriers commented that when it gets really cold, that the ink pens don't work.
We did spend a lot of time on this, and hopefully, I'm kind of with you, Jeff. It's, I'm not entirely sure they're necessary, but then we're not changing the body of what we had put in place with our task force, which is super important, because I wouldn't want people to think that now that they're not here, that we're changing it, because we're not.
So I'm just curious, you said we've put a lot of time into this, and I'm just curious who that is, who the "we" is.
There was a task force, Jeff maybe knows who was on it. We had a task force that met many times. Five times.
Oh, so you're not talking about recently on these particular changes?
No, prior to this.
Yeah, the usual suspects like Teresa Staley and, and others that are of, it was during the Spellerberg Pool period of petition gathering. And we had quite a few older women that were petition, petition carriers at that point. And we had probably a dozen or twenty people in the room to, they were worried that we were going to, you know, push them away at gunpoint or something.
Commissioner Karski?
Should have done a little more homework on this, but just in reading it, when you look at the two sentences, two separate things, and I guess to Commissioner Barth's point, it goes without saying that if you're gathering petitions, you have to comply with all the applicable laws. So I don't know if stating that in the policy is necessary. You know, but putting the, the second sentence in there, that, hey, if you don't comply with all applicable laws, you're gone. I mean, I, that makes sense. I mean, what is the outcome or the, the effect of doing it? So just my observation.
Commissioner Bender?
And I guess, I mean, what struck me when I read this is the same issue that, that has been discussed is who, who has the, who makes the determination if they're complying with state law? What is, what is our obligation in that respect? I mean, honestly, I, I think somebody needs to comply, that they comply with state law, but I'm not sure that anybody in our staff is really qualified to do that necessarily, other than perhaps the auditor. But, I mean, I would be, I honestly would be more in favor of this policy if we took that sentence out, that they're responsible for ensuring that signature gathering is, abides of the applicable law, because I think that goes without saying. And then if we leave the final sentence in there, you know, then it's much more clear that we have the authority to ask them to leave if they are not abiding by our rules, which is that they have to remain outside the county building and not obstruct individuals and, you know, maintain themselves in a polite, courteous manner. Those are all things that we have some control over. I think the way this is put in there, that, you know, saying that we're going to, you know, have the right to ask them to leave immediately following the sentence that says that they have to comply with state law makes it look like we're tying those two things together, which makes me just a little bit uncomfortable. I'd be, I would, I mean, they have to comply by state law. I don't think we have to say that, but I think since it's our policy, we can make it clear that if you don't abide by the things that we do control that are within our policy, that we have the right to ask you to leave.
If I may, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Bender, and perhaps we should defer action on this till next week. But, you know, our building originally was intended to have the east entrance be the main entrance. And there were still houses and residential properties here to the west. And so that was like the back door. And the front door over there, nobody comes in that way anymore. And yet, our petition gathers crowd that location. In fact, I think just before the close of nominations there, there were six or eight people trying to become delegates to the Republican State Convention that needed some signatures. And in Rapid City, I believe they've had an issue with people going in and like pestering folks in the treasurer's line and stuff like that. And I think that's absolutely beyond the pale. We can't and we won't allow that kind of thing to happen. But I almost wish we had a, a better location over here on the west side for, for folks to hang out at. If we did away with parking in a couple of spots and built a little half-round plaza there or something. Because when, when some of these issues come forward, and what do we have, twenty items on the, on the ballot this year? Initiated measures, constitutional amendments, blah, blah, blah. Suddenly, unless you're carrying all twenty-one yourself, you've got eighteen people out there trying to get your, are you a registered voter? You live in South Dakota? I mean, it's, it is a bit of a harassing harangue that you have to run through, and we don't want that to happen. I don't think they want it to happen either, but they're just trying to do their jobs.
What would be your pleasure? I would hope that we could finish this item up this week and not defer it, but what would you?
Well, I would make a motion to move, to approve it if we eliminated the sentence that states petition signature gatherers are responsible for ensuring signature gathering efforts abide by all applicable laws regarding petition signature collection enacted by the state of South Dakota.
So strike that line.
It's my motion.
I'll second that. And I, I would make one further comment.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, how many of these petitions have been tossed out? Lots of them. So when we go back and look and see that, you know, Jeff Barth circulated a petition, the Secretary of State threw it out, you know, is the county then going to come and arrest me or ban me from ever doing a petition again? I, I hope not. I don't think that would be our intent ever. But I, I think Commissioner Bender is smart here.
I'm going to cut you off. Your five minutes is up. Just kidding. I have a motion in a second to approve the, the following sentence. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Can I just make one quick comment? Carol Mueller, Commission Office, yes. The, the one reason why it might be an option to have that statement in there is because this is posted at the door. And it's an opportunity for those who are gathering petitions to be reminded of that, that they, did you follow? And also for the public coming in to say, well, maybe I should ask those questions. And again, we are not wanting to go into enforcement at all. It's education and just reminders. Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Auditor Litz has a comment.
Bob Litz, County Auditor, and I was listening in on the conversations up here. And I understand your concerns, but I, I, I think that that, that statement in there that you want to strike puts the onus on them to make sure that they are complying with state law and whatever goes on out there. Honestly, I try to pay attention to what this, this barrage of things that came at us concerning petition gatherers, and I'm still a little bit confused about what finally came out of that. I would tell you that when a petition goes in, or if it gets handed into our office, what we look for is style and form. Is it filled out correctly? And it is always up to a challenger, the Secretary of State's office, to finalize the legality of those petitions, not the auditor's office. That said, I would like you to know that we do monitor the parking lot. We do try to keep control of the people that are hanging out in the lobby down there. It's a, it's a, it's not always easy, because they kind of come and go. We look for candidates with signs on when we're doing absentee voting, but it's an issue. I don't think there's an easy answer to it, but currently, the way I stated things are the way they stand. So I would, I would encourage you to leave that in there, believing that, that, that puts the onus on them to make sure that they are. on them to make sure that they are correct in understanding all the state laws that would apply to them collecting signatures out here. But.
I have a motion in a second on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously to strike that second, that first line. Commissioner Bender?
I think that, to the comments that were made, I don't see any reason that this is our policy, but I don't see any reason we can't post something on the door that states that all petition gatherers are responsible to comply with state law. I mean, I think that could be a separate posting, and I don't see that this prohibits us from doing that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bender. Item number 21 is liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Okay. 22, new business. And item number 23 is old business. Seeing none, I would ask to adjourn into executive session immediately following the commission meeting for the purpose of South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, items one and three.
Oop, second.
A second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned until executive session.
We've got a few minutes.
We've got a few minutes.